Put that in the contract when they write it just come here. Here you go. This is actually no more following.
All right, folks, it's six o'clock and it's time for start our regular Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting. And with that, I'll call meeting order, please. And Mike's gonna do us in the pledge. And Robert, if you would, the prayer, please, sir. If you'd stand, please.
Before I do the pledge, I like where we wanted to remember tonight when we go to bed and say our prayers to remember what's going on in Afghanistan. Pledge your late.
Pledge your late. Here, Bill White.
I be United States of America.
Considered Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and every being.
Good bowing in this prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you, the Savior and Lord, so thankful for giving us another day. Father, thank you for giving me blessings in our lives. Thank you for our health. Father, we thank you just for everything that you've done for us. We ask for just protection over those who are involved. Afghanistan, all the things that are going on there. Father, we just pray for protection of those that are involved, those that are just caught in the middle of it. We ask that you protect them much over again. We go into this meeting tonight, Father, we ask for wisdom. Decisions here tonight, we benefit the City of Mount Pleasant residents and all parties involved. We ask for your protections as we leave this place tonight and care us home safe with our families. Do you thanks for praising Jesus.
Amen. Thank you. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Here.
Jacqueline Granberry?
Here.
Mike David?
Here.
Eric Harvey?
Here.
Willie Alberson?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. All right, number four is approval and correction of prior minutes, prior meetings minutes. We have both the study session as well as the regular commission meeting.
And Mayor and Commissioners, if I can just chime in real quick, I found two corrections at the last minute on the study session. If you're looking at it, there's the that we have the word that we're gonna swear an office in that should be officer at the bottom of the first page, that once we pass the historic zoning overlay, it says we will apply to become a historic local government. We will apply to be a certified local government. And if you'll approve it amended it is that we'll make those changes. Any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Those changes, any others? Anybody see any others?
I see one. Mayor, so I make a recommendation to accept the study session as Kate presented.
With changes.
With the changes and also the regular meeting.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Awards, presentations, and appointments. Mr. Mike Pruitt, if you would come forward and I'll meet you right up front. The mayor.
First of all, I want to say a word or two. Mike's been an awfully, awfully, awfully good friend of our family. More than you'll ever know. I mean, it's awesome. He's an honor to do this. I get dishonor periodically, but I've gotta say this is probably one of the best days that I've been. So, thank you very much. And with that, don't you want to stand up here all night?
He wants to speak.
I know you. Be hereby known that whereas the City of Mount Pleasant is honored and recognized, Mike Pruitt for generously giving his time and talents in this community for forty-six years and owner of Pruitt's Custom Cacti. And whereas Mike Pruitt is a lifelong resident of Murray County in the board of ongoing vets to Donald and Lucille Martin Pruitt of Philly Open and later married Melody Childress in nineteen seventy-one, whereas Mike Pruitt established Pruitt's Custom Cacti at the City of Mount Pleasant in nineteen seventy-six. That's awesome. Whereas Mike Pruitt has always been known to go above and beyond all customers, even if it seemed that a project was impossible. But it's probably gay periodically. And whereas Mike Pruitt is known for having a big heart and a love for helping others. Whereas Mike Pruitt currently dedicates his free time for our community by serving on our board of zoning appeals. Now therefore, I, Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, on behalf of the City Commission, do proclaim the day of August the seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, is Mike Pruitt. In honor of his forty-six years of outstanding service to this community and do call upon the citizens and residents of the City of Mount Pleasant to join with us and wish him just to prove wonderful return.
If anybody else wants to get in for some pictures, we're happy to do that. Have a few extra copies of the proclamation to be back.
I'd like to thank everybody for having the honor to work with you many years. And I can't give enough thanks for the ones that have worked county and Mount Pleasant and some of the surrounding counties. I've been here through a good little ride. Thank y'all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now down to ordinances. Number six, A, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten seventy-nine. This is a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance amending Title fourteen zoning and land use control, Chapter two zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code being the same zoning ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the Municipal Zoning Act Incorporated therein by rezoning a piece of property from light industrial to high-density residential. This is on Magnolia, correct?
It's on Magnolia and Canaan.
Canaan Road.
A building up to forty-three.
Yeah.
And Mayor and Commissioners, this was in front of the planning commission in a prior month in July. And you have the engineer for the developer that is here, and you also have the realtor for the property owner here as well, if you've got any questions. But this is the recommendation is to go from light industrial to high-density residential with, I think, some townhomes, et cetera. Did pass in the planning commission on Miss Granberry. I know that the GCP plant did come and talk about whether or not it needed to stay light industrial. I know that they had an opportunity to make an offer on the property and didn't. And that was discussed at the planning commission. What else am I missing, Miss Granberry?
They're the only ones that came.
Okay, it's the only ones that definitely.
Not in favor of it, right.
But and then I've got your little sheets in front of you. But if anybody else is here, just.
Any other discussion among the commission? Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one, please. And with that, entertain a motion.
I think this is a great thing. So, I move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten seventy-nine as presented. Because, yeah, thank you, Ms. Willitt.
An amendment in the agreement with the land.
Yes.
Use plan for the area.
It would be because there's houses across the street.
That's correct.
You know, so the amendment, the request for high-density residential is in agreement with the land use plan for the area.
All right.
And would also have no adverse effect on adjoining property owners. Okay?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a couple of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten eighty, final hearing, public hearing, final reading, I'm sorry, an ordinance of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, amending Title four, Chapter six of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to travel rules, regulations, and procedures.
And Mayor and Commissioners, you all have a copy in front of you. There is a paragraph that changed, and it is on page four of what you have. Basically, if you're not staying overnight, we will reimburse you for a lunch. And we also allow, if there are any dietary restrictions, some a lot of times hotels that don't comply with what people need to be eating. So, we have the ability to approve paying for breakfast beyond what the hotel requires. Otherwise, since the first reading, now that those are the changes that you have in front of you.
Any discussion from the commission? Hearing none. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect no one cared to. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. In favor of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten eighty as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a couple of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, monthly report from Mayor. Just very briefly, we were going to have and still wound up with a few cars here Friday night. We were going to have a cruising slash car show and the weather, I think they probably put out in the thing that was best. It said we couldn't beat August the thirteenth, Friday the thirteenth. It got us. We couldn't get in with weather. So, still had about twenty cars show up. The young man that was gonna do the food truck brought it on up and sold out. So, it worked out well for everybody. It was postponed until the twenty-eighth to begin at four P M. Going forward, we are going to have this the last, it's ordinarily the last Saturday of each month, which will coincide with the music on the porch, the concert series that the city promotes and works with. And it'll be the car show will be from four to seven, and then the music at someone's home will be from seven to nine. So, would encourage you to come out. I think if the weather had held up, we were probably gonna be a little bit overwhelmed, which is not a bad thing. So, I'd really like to encourage everybody to come out. It's gonna be family friendly. We're gonna have children's area, correct, Bedford?
As it grows, we may have a children's zone.
Yeah.
We have Charleston, you know, thank you.
Yeah. So, I would encourage you, it's gonna be a family friendly event. We're gonna block it off so you can get around and see the automobiles. The owners don't mind that the way we're gonna space them. But all we would do is ask that you please be careful around them. Some of these folks have got some real money in these things. So, that's all I've got. Monthly financial and budget report, Ms. Loretta, please, ma'am.
Yes, you receive your reports in your email. And we do have, our server is in, and we will be converting that, converting over from the old server to the new server in a coming weeks. One of those days, we will actually get close for about half a day while they figure everything over from the one to the other. We will publicize that and put it out on Facebook and as much as we can whenever we get that day firm. That date's not firm at this moment. Do I have any questions from?
Any questions from the commission, comments? Y'all know me, I look it over pretty closely. Surprise, surprise. We got two point two five two million dollars in the bank for a change. And we're building a little cash here and there. We're gonna need it, and we know we are. Once the sewer project gets underway, we'll know there'll be some cost overruns. Inevitable, happens on everyone. So, we're getting some cash built together to make sure that we can complete that project without any hiccups.
Is Mayor, that, you know, we've been putting aside the forty thousand that we were paying on that old loan.
Yeah.
We've been putting it aside in a separate bank account. And right now, that that balance is right at eight hundred thousand. So, that will go a long way in wherever we have those cost overruns. And that that is net of that first bid that we did have a little bit of cost overrun, and we're already, it's all that's actually, that's already been paid. So, that's a very positive thing.
Very positive.
Everybody's getting the financials that Loretta's sending, right? Just wanna make sure. Okay.
And also, just FYI, she's talking about that money we were paying almost four percent on. Now we're paying what, point nine one?
It's it's over two, isn't it?
Yes.
Just over two.
Yeah.
So, significant savings. Any questions for Ms. Loretta? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the financial budget report.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from City Manager.
Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to point out, you may see around town that we have dig at the roller that we need when we're using the coal patch to improve the streets. So hopefully, we can get some work done. And O C, their guys worked on it with it all day today. And I try and stay on top of the paving. The county bid out two point two miles on Hay Stent Road last week and got the bids on August thirteenth. And the low bid was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a narrower road than most of ours. But just try and stay on track of as we go into the future, what we're gonna need and to anticipate what we're gonna need, because that's a very recent bid.
Yes.
So, just try and stay on top of that. Want to make sure you know that the gentleman that came to speak at the study session about the photo enforcement, they'll be in front of you in September with a contract that doesn't involve money, but involves our commitment to a certain number of years so that they get their money back. And oh, you remember a couple of months ago, the people from the Glass Street Church of Christ came in here, and M Test has been out here, and he thinks he's gonna have his report done this week. So, once we have that, we'll certainly share it with you, but we'll share it with the people from the Glass Street Church of Christ as well.
Good. Perfect.
That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Kate? All right, number ten, special reports from other city departments or committees, wastewater liaison report.
The wastewater report that we kind of reviewed at the study session is the sewer trunk line deal to the resin shortage. We're waiting on that. Some of our installation equipment to be in. Our contractor did have some COVID issues. Hopefully, we will begin work towards the ends of this month on something that has been very delayed mainly because of weather. The most recent delay is this resin shortage. The Rain Street Project and the wastewater treatment plant are both still under review at USDA. And surely, that has to be approved or released shortly, because it's been there longer than we anticipated. And then finally, the influent pump station, that's already been awarded by you, and we should start seeing something in the next thirty days on that.
Okay. Any questions for Kate on the barge report? All right, anything from the gas?
Just to let you know that that college pre college street project didn't start Monday, and that's going from First Avenue to Adams. And try to get the word out there. And they're doing a lot of under the road, so we shouldn't be tearing too much up. But just so you're aware of it, somebody called you and asked you what's going on out there. That's what it is. We're replacing the gas line there.
Any questions? I've seen them up there working. All right, number eleven, new business. A, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten eighty-one. This is a first reading, an ordinance amending Title fourteen zoning and land use control, Chapter two zoning ordinance of Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the Municipal Zoning Act Incorporated therein by rezoning a portion of property from low-density residential R one to high-density residential R three. And this property is located at the corner of Southport Road in Fryerson Lane.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this was in front of the planning commission on August tenth last week, and it was approved, I believe it was a three-two vote that approved it. So, this is a lot, and the owners are here of a lot, the developers are here to to create some townhomes and possibly single-family homes. Of course, any concept that they shared could change when the site plan is put in for review with the planning commission. But this is up for the commission to determine if they're gonna go with the planning commission on their agreement to to allow the high-density residential. There was a lot of talk about sewer, water, utilities to the right. All of that is not part of whether or not you rezone it. That would be part of the site plan and the construction and what can and can't be built there. This is more of using your cards. Is it appropriate to rezone this?
We're not obligated. Is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's all part of the site plan. Yeah.
Okay.
No, nothing's obligated.
Okay.
And if you look at your draft ordinance, the last two whereas sections, so I left one that's got a highlight, or it should still have a highlight in there.
Yeah.
Yellow. That's what we're filling in with what y'all say. Those are where your findings, the facts, and conclusions of all are going.
Yeah.
So, the whereas section above that is what the planning commission said, and then the two above it are where the planning commission said. And then that's where we'll fill in y'all's findings of fact. So, but it might be helpful to speed up.
Thank you, Cory. Any other comments?
Did you say somebody was here?
I just said that the owner of the property is here.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if anybody was here to speak on it or not, but.
Vice Mayor, you got anything you'd like to add? You are on the planning commission. It was a pretty close vote.
They were not in, well, the people who live there is not in agreement with it because of the location, because of the size of the lot, and because the way that the lot staked out is gonna be issues with other people's property.
There was some concern with, one of the owners felt that the stakes were on his property. And there was a lot of conversation about that. But the bottom line is whether it's rezoned or not, the stakes are where they are. And that our advice was you need to get a survey to determine whose survey is correct. But that's not gonna change the zoning. But there was concern with the size of the lot as well. And a lot of it, too, was how are we gonna service it utility-wise, street-wise?
Water and sewage and the pressure of the water up that way and all of that.
Yeah. And I did look into that. And what what Public Works has told me is not in agreement with what we heard. So maybe there's an issue on his end that we're gonna follow up on as far as the water pressure.
Are they tearing the house down that's there?
Not a house there. It's a, it's a.
Some kind of mill.
Backyard. I think there's a house, an old house close by.
At the end of the.
It's not a house.
At the end of the.
Not on the lot.
No, it's, the lot.
I'm not sure he's looking at.
The lot sits between.
Because it's Fryerson Lane, right?
Right. But the lot sits between Fryerson Lane and.
Dance.
And dance, yeah. But they're talking about putting another street down the middle of the apartments to come in from the main street.
Told us that, like, yes.
It's just, yeah, that.
So, it's all the land behind those rows of houses that are right on Southport would be behind those.
That's correct, Kate.
Gotcha. Okay. We were looking at it.
But all the landowners is in disagreeing. Is that what you're saying?
Who wants to live up there?
And like we said, there were a variety of reasons. The the reason of where the stakes are, that's not gonna change whether it's rezoned or not. Where they think their property line is and where the survey says it is is something that will have to get resolved either way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really not the city's responsibility. That portion's not. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, entertain a motion. Doesn't sound like we're gonna get one.
What's the process?
What's the process, Cory? I'm just wondering.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. He asked you first. Go ahead.
The recommendation has been made from the planning commission. So, you either have to accept or deny, or I mean, I guess if you do nothing, then.
That's the.
Do we, do we hear, do we have from the people from the area that it's normally?
There's anybody here tonight?
This is the first reading. So, normally, we don't let them speak at the first reading. So, I do not want to go out tonight. So, they're supposed to be coming next time.
And then there's the general consensus that we need housing, too. So, it's just kind of a little bit of everything.
I hate that.
Because we do.
We do. We do. But then again, you know, I don't.
I'd love to see an investment of new homes there.
But I don't wanna go against the people that lives there.
It has to be based on those reasons, though. Right, Cory?
I will say, to try to clarify, when the gentleman was here talking about the lot, like the lot line, I think that the issue that would be relevant to y'all's discussion is how it would change the setbacks, not where the line is. You know, we don't, we've said that several times. We don't get involved in property dispute, but it could change. Go ahead.
Can we, Cory, I guess, put this off until?
Table it to the next meeting.
Until they decide, you know, where the markers are supposed to be.
Well, surveys have been done.
Yeah, the markers are.
Yeah, surveys have been done.
Yeah.
Survey's been done.
But the resident disagrees. So, it's up to him. It's his property to get a survey to say it's either right or wrong.
Yeah.
And we have that problem quite often in my.
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know.
You know, smart. And it's up to them whether they get water and sewage and.
Yeah, you're just talking about whether it's appropriate to rezone.
I'd say it, nothing else.
Site plan has to go back to the planning commission.
Still a lot of work to be done. A ton. More than has been done to date.
Yeah, water and sewage would have to go up there for your courses and all this way.
Okay.
In in the site plan.
So, again, I'll call for a motion. Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept twenty twenty-one dash ten eighty-one because the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area. It's residential, so this will just add houses to the area.
I second that. It'll be rezoned.
We have a motion in a second.
Can I ask one other?
Absolutely.
This by no means holds the city responsible to provide sewer.
Yep.
To this project whatsoever.
No, it does not.
So, if these owners want sewer there, they're gonna have to pay for it themselves.
That was actually discussed in the meeting, that somebody said if sewer was brought in, that I have to pay for it.
No, one of the guys said a sewer should run up there.
In front of his home.
Right in front of his home. Would he be able to tap into it, and would he have to pay for it?
Yes. That was specific. And we said yes and yes. If it's there, you have to pay for it. That those are so many, those are far away from.
No, I know. No, but I don't wanna put, you know, the owners come back and say, hey, y'all done done this. And, ma'am, you gonna have to put sewer up there at the city's expense. I just don't want that to happen.
You're not deciding on anything like that right now.
We just passing to have it.
That would all have to come before you.
There's still a lot that will be done.
All right, okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I think this would be in best order, Cory. Have a roll call.
Jacqueline Granberry?
No.
Mike David?
No.
Bill White?
Yes.
Willie Alberson?
Yeah.
Eric Harvey?
Yes.
Four to one, motion carries.
Three to two.
Two to two.
Three to two.
I got it, no.
Yeah.
Mike.
Miss Granberry. Miss Granberry, okay. Sorry. It's all good.
All right.
We got it. So, they three to two.
Hey, we got it straight.
Yep.
What matters? All right. Healthy discussion. Let me say that. Healthy discussion. B, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty, a resolution repealing and replacing the City of Mount Pleasant Employee Handbook.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we decided to repeal and replace because we were making so many changes. They're all relatively small changes, but it gets hard to insert, tear out the old sheet and insert the right sheet and make sense of it for employees. So, we're repealing what we have. You have in front of you, I just made two copies, or Teresa did, of all the changes in the final version of the handbook. You also have bullet points with red ink and highlight of every change that's in here. I'm happy to go through all of them. I'm happy to touch on the ones that I think are ones that you definitely wanna hear about. A lot of it's language. We did give ourselves, we haven't gotten to it yet, but we did put the Juneteenth holiday in here. We're probably, that's in here, added on as something that I know Columbia's done, I think, for the last two years.
Good.
I'm happy to, as you read through it, to go through any of it. I'm happy to go through all of it. We've had in the, we have language in here where if somebody is sick, somebody can donate sick time to them. But you have to have exhausted all of your sick time, and you can't give sick time unless you have a certain amount of sick time and vacation time to donate that. We have that practice right now. We're just clarifying it. There was a new maternity paternity leave passed effective July. There was a new maternity, paternity leave passed effective July 1st of this year. Actually had it passed when we had an employee that was pregnant. And you have a sheet in front of you with the final version of that paragraph right here that Cory worked on because we actually had it in here twice and there was no need for that. We have a we have an education incentive program that we've been, we've used for the past couple of years. We've reduced it in writing. It's similar to other cities that if you have a technical, technical degree, you get some additional money. If you have an associate's degree, you get some additional money, same with bachelors and postbachelors. And it's just reduced in writing into the handbook. None of that is effective for me. It's just regular, ordinary employees. We have, we, we've paid for global positioning on all of our vehicles, city vehicles. So it's in here that we have GPS on your vehicles and it will be used to, you know, cut costs, figure out what costs are. It could be used in a discipline area, action of where you are with it. But it's all outlined so employees understand the purpose of the GPS system. We have language in here about appropriate cell phone use, personal cell phone use on the job because we've had some problems with that. Kind of the bigger, most of the other stuff are kind of small language. But I'm happy to discuss anything that you see in there that you want clarified.
Is it already in there, Kate? I guess, you know, like, like there was a little Wendy, somebody disagreeing or whatever, you know, during COVID, you know, that it's in our handbook that you will work different hours or whatever. If, I guess, like you, the city manager, seems, sees that we need to offset the working hours.
We, we don't have that in the handbook specifically related to COVID since that's hopefully a temporary thing. But we have the ability to do that and especially we have the ability to do that based on government, governor's executive orders. So we did do that. Honestly, didn't do it for that long of a period of time. And then we got all of our hours back up, but we had the six foot spaces and things like that. We do have the authority to do that in a situation like that, that's beyond what anybody would ever comprehend.
You're welcome.
Any more conversation, questions, okay?
I was glad the education pay incentive was in there. Yeah, that's
It's our current practice, but we hadn't had it in the handbook and it's been, it's been in the budget the last couple of years.
Okay. Do you know more discussion? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to re-accept Resolution 2021, 2021-20 as presented.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Hamilton Building Development Agreement.
Mayor and Commissioners, I think I discussed at the study session, we had put this off from the last meeting because MTS pointed out that we probably want to make sure that any savings to the private developer on tap fees needs to come from the general fund and not from the utility. So if you look at the agreement, when you get down to the city responsibilities on number four, we specifically say that the city is going to pay $6,750, which was the cost to redesign the parking lot from the city's general fund to the Mount Pleasant Utility Department. And then also the $400 to be in front of the planning commission to the general fund, to the Mount Pleasant Planning Department. What, anything you want to point out there, Cory?
No, this is the same concept that I loaded on a while back, but we just are changing, we're putting it into writing and we're making sure that the money is coming from the right place and so we're not taking from one department to give to the other.
Yeah.
Just for accounting purposes.
Okay, any other? Comments or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like a motion to approve the Hamilton Building Development Agreement.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. D, Approval of Mount Pleasant Power System Signal Authorization.
And Mayor and Commissioners, I put in front of you the most recent letter that the power system is asking the mayor to sign. And that's a very elusive letter because I just made six copies and I cannot find one in front of me, but you all have one in front of you. It's been, okay.
It's the one from Al.
It's two Al Kirstens from the mayor dated tomorrow. They changed it from the original amount to and not to exceed amount. This is for the downtown signalization here as part of the downtown revitalization. This is a very different traffic signal than what's going to be at Polk Lane and Zion Road in North Main. This one has to be completely ADA accessible. You need talking when it's time to cross. Hoping we can get Country Singer to do that recording. They've done that.
Come to school and do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But this is something that the power system will put in and own, but we pay it forever and a monthly cost to do that with a facility charge of right now, these are all estimated because it hasn't been bid out of $2,152 for the traffic signal and $1,555 for the street pedestrian lights. And Commissioner Davis is on the power system. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, but this is the most recent numbers I think you've got.
Mr. Farrell, he's here and he might want to say something too, but I guess when we set this limit, we just don't want to say, yeah, here, y'all just go and whatever it costs.
Not knowing, yeah.
Knowing, you know, so we just want to make sure, you know, what, what we're doing.
Yeah.
Well, the good news is, is I see it with this and for everybody's information, the power system actually goes to TVA, gets the money and then we pay the power system monthly for the use of that light. We don't own it. So the good news is somebody runs over and tears it all to pieces, we don't own it. And if the lights go out, they're LED, they're not that inexpensive to replace. That's all theirs from now on. So that's, that's, that's the, and with this light, it's not going to be, as you said, Polk Lane.
Right, so it's much more elaborate.
It's, it's, it's a, it's got a lot of bells and whistles because it has to
It'll have the radar scene that if you're pulling up on the bluegrass, it's time to change lights, things like that.
Yeah.
But the other good thing about this, if something does go wrong, you know, it's not like you're going to have to call somebody an hour or two.
Absolutely, right here.
And the, the power system has the ability and the equipment and the knowledge to address it. We, we don't, we would have to hire an outside contractor.
And I would say also, you know, when Al spoke on it and he's sort of, and he's true, you know. You know, we're sort of obligated, you know, to help Mount Pleasant as much as we can.
Right.
And, and the power system does a great job of that.
Yes, they sure do.
And there is a cap on what will be charged every month, right? It won't go over a certain amount.
It's actually a formula that, but once we know the exact cost of the pro, the project, that formula has to be applied. So you can't, you can't sway away from that at all. He's got on here in that letter, anticipated, but, and not to exceed, but until we bid it out, we know the exact cost.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he, it's even in here that it is to not to exceed. Any other comments, questions? Do you not entertain a motion?
Move that we approve the Mount Pleasant Power System Signal Authorization as presented. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it and thank Mount Pleasant Power.
Amen. All right, we have a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. E, Bid Award Alarm System.
Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this a bit at study session. There's no alarm system in City Hall at all to alert of a, a problem, a fire or anything like that. It's been something that Philip has been talking to me about for years. And we do have some money that came in as, as a result of the COVID. And we did bid it out and the lowest bid is State Systems Incorporated, SSI, for $17,975. And that is our recommendation to go with that bid.
Did you feel good within chief?
Yes, sir.
And just for everybody's information, you probably, I don't think you've got it in front of you, but we had a bid all the way up to $31,575, so we're getting not quite half price, but it's a, it's significant savings. Just FYI. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like a motion to set the Bid Award Alarm System to, I ain't got the name, State, State, State Systems Incorporated.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. City Manager Evaluation Report, without going into too much detail because this is employee information and it is private.
Everybody should have it though.
But all the commissioners should have it and you were given a copy of it. I just kind of, I'm just going to be very brief with this and just hit the high points because of the fact that it is confidential to some degree. Kate's overall average was 4.11, which is, and the performance evaluation exceeds the expectations that the commission thinks that she should be doing, which is excellent review. Recommendations that the, the commission had for Kate's improvement were very minimal. One of which was listing the complaints of the public, which I think any of us could do a better job of from time to time. But it does in here as well as during that. It also says you're doing a great job. Second would be provide more and better in-service for commissioners. Continued seminars and training will continue to be as needed. And also in here that her time will shift more to project management. And I would have to say that that's probably about as accurate as it gets due to the fact of what we all got going on right now. And I think we're very fortunate to have Kate, so. Any questions or anything from the commission, I would got to be kind of cautious. I'll call it. Hearing none, what I would like to do is go ahead and propose an increase for Kate of 3%. Thank you. And just due to what her overall performance evaluation is and I think what we see day in and day out.
I think it's easiest to do next pay period, yeah, and, and I didn't want
Everybody good with that?
Other employees.
Next pay period.
Is that good? Can you present a motion, Mayor?
I don't know. Can I present a motion? Okay, just making sure. That's why I didn't say as a motion. I said I would propose. So I'll make the motion. Do we still have a second?
Yes, sir.
We still have a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, number 12, General Comments from Citizens. We would like for you please to keep these
Regulation.
Yes, thank you very much, Kate. We would like for you please to keep these to three minutes or less. First we have is Shirley Webster. If you don't mind, please come forward and give us your address, please, ma'am.
Alvin, it's 115 La Niña.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have two things. I don't know if anything can be done, but me now, I'm a senior citizen. I think that they would have come, but oh my, water bill. I get my check and my husband to on the third Wednesday of every month. So it's a lot of people that gets them on the fourth Wednesday. That's a lot of money to be paying late charges. When it, when it's, I have even tried to get my check where it can come earlier, but you can't do it because there's so many. And that's, that's a lot, like this month, I think it's $13. I think it's $13 after the 15th. 15 was last week. My check comes tomorrow.
There is a discount for penetration, senior citizens.
I don't get that either. I don't get that either.
You just need to, you need to let the ladies up front know.
Did.
Okay.
Still was on this bill.
Is there a res, I mean, I hate to stick my neck out there, but is there a resolution or?
That's why I just, what can we do? Because that's real.
We can't with utilities.
They can't move the date back some, at least until the, maybe the 21st or 27th or something like that. That would, that would help.
That would help people get their check.
Exactly.
You can't
We only have a certain amount of time that we have to bill from the time we meet, read those meters till we bill. And then you have two weeks from the time that it's billed till it's due. So there's really not a whole lot that can be, that can be done as far as the timing.
And I feel like no matter what the timing is, it's not going to work for somebody.
Yeah.
But I mean, but I mean
If this one gets paid on the 20th, the next one may, if you move it, they may mess up somebody else.
But I mean, if somebody
Because like, if I get my check on the 3rd, I go on and pay all my bills then, just like I do now. On the 3rd Wednesday, I pay them all. I just don't have no money left. But these 13 and 10 and 12 for, for years, that's a lot of money every month.
But I mean, if somebody is trustworthy, like we, I guess, you know, if somebody's got a bad debt or whatever, you know, we just say I mean.
There's, they
I mean, I, I hate it. I hate it for, you know, for her and
I mean, it's just a lot of
There are agencies, not-for-profit agencies that can help, but we can't treat anybody. We have to treat everybody across the board the exact same way with utilities and it's a
I'm not asking for
The utilities will only have twice a year.
Yeah, I mean, this is something, I don't see why the, the, the light bill people, they move they, oh, over the thing back.
Yeah.
Because it used to be the 15th.
The, the big difference between power system and us is they can read it.
I know that.
At their, we have to go out and read that meter.
Always said, senior citizens doesn't have a chance in this town. I sit back and I listen to everything that's going on. What about us?
But you said you get paid on the 3rd?
3rd Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
3rd Wednesday.
And it's fact that they'll Very traditionally, you used to get it on the 3rd.
Yeah, a lot of people get it the first month.
But you said traditionally, it's not that way.
Not a lot of people anymore. A lot of people, everybody came on in the last couple of five years has been to the 3rd Wednesday because of the overload on the first of the month.
You know, we have to realize
And I haven't done a senior citizen very, very long.
The sun always have to live
Okay, got it.
Week to week or month to month.
All right, let me just ask this, please. Could we, could we look into this and see if there's some solution? Because it, it's real.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I know it is.
We have looked into what the electric system does. It's absolutely not possible.
Well, they, they've got a different source of way of reading their meters than we do.
And they can shut them off from in-house.
That's correct. But let's just, let's just pause and look instead of saying no. Let's look at what we might be able to say yes.
Are there people that get it at the first week of the month?
Cause we handle that in-house.
Yeah, there are people that still get theirs the first of the The people that just came on board with those
So you have a, and we will look into it, but you have a system that knows after the 15th to tack on a late fee.
We can't waive that no, no kind of way.
If you're going to waive for everybody.
Then you, then they're right. Then you got to do it for everyone, even if they are late.
In, in unusual circumstances, yes, I'll waive somebody at least once. If they come in and there was an issue, but I can't do it every month.
Again
Senior citizen, you can't waive.
No.
Again, let's, let's look. Let's pause and just look. Please.
I don't know what the definition of a senior citizen is, but I'm right up there too.
I am too. I am too.
Well, I'm not right up there.
I'm close. I'm already called it. I just not getting the check yet.
Okay, what about this here that, you know, senior citizens had to be 65, right? To get this, it's not but a dollar.
A dollar off the
That adds up too, because, well, I don't want to tell my age, but it's been five years that I've been paying this extra dollar.
And, and you submitted something in writing?
Didn't know anything about it.
Okay.
Until one day happened to be up there and I seen this. And I asked the girl, how long have this been in? How long have it, how long have it been going on?
It's for a long time.
That's what I'm saying. But they up on your taxes and everything else, but they not up on telling you, you're eligible to get not to pay 1750.
Actually, when you're, when they, oh, doing you service.
Well, when I called and then this month, it's still on there. So you see what I'm saying? It didn't do any good.
Would somebody just follow up on that, please?
I've got her address. I'll follow up on it, but it's, it's definitely the citizens' responsibility to tell us they turn a certain age. We can't keep track of that.
That's right.
It also has to do with income too.
Yeah.
That's, that's correct.
Some paperwork that has to go with
Again, let's just, let's just take a moment and go back and look.
Well, you're right up on the, on the other issue. Like the power company, you know, if some Like the power company, you know, if somebody wants to give five dollars or something extra on the bill, you know, it goes to help somebody.
Yeah.
So I mean, is that something that maybe that we could look into?
That might be something we could look into. Now, I don't know what the.
You're talking about power and water, right?
Oh, no, no, ma'am.
Mountain Power.
I'm talking about my.
Family, family is the one that does.
In which Mount Pleasant Power, you know, is with family, family also, but, but I mean, you know, it's just something that, that Mount Pleasant Power or customers do, you know? If they want to.
Well, again, I, I'm just going to ask that we look at some different avenues, please.
We'll look into your specific and get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Webb.
Good evening. My name is Frank Webb, pastor, First Baptist Church, and even though I'm used to preaching thirty-minute sermons, I believe I can ask one question and make one request in three minutes. My question is this, what is the procedure or process for amending a city ordinance?
I'm sure, but I mean, you know, I guess our attorney would have to.
It has to be a city ordinance, not, not a state. It's not something that we're doing today.
It becomes in front of the commission and it's voted on two times over the course of two months, and it's advertised in the paper for final reading.
Public hearing.
A public hearing, just like you've seen tonight.
Yes.
But Mr. Webb, we can change the footage up or whatever, but that doesn't change for the people that's already employed.
And we can't override the state.
And what he's saying, in other words, even if you change it now and somebody's already there, they're going to be grandfathered in and we can't make them close it down.
Like the brewery, it's already.
It's not there.
It's a mandatory permit application.
Yeah. Okay, but it has not gone before the beer board unless it's happened within the twent, last twenty-four hours.
Happened.
Not as yet.
But my, my question is, how do you initiate the amendment before it comes before a meeting like this?
It would be something that the commission would, would want to do.
So a commissioner would have to initiate.
But I think what they're telling you is it may not solve the problem that you're trying to solve.
Yeah. Want to get there, uh, first. So one of the commissioners would have to initiate. So I would strongly ask that one of you commissioners initiate that amendment, uh, to the ordinance eight dash two one six that we believe is, um, strongly discriminatory against our churches because it is unfair and unequal, uh, in the distance required between a business with alcohol and a church compared to a school. Schools a thousand feet, you allow it four times as close to a church, only two hundred and fifty feet. So we believe that's unequal treatment under the law. Also, we believe it needs to be amended to a straight line measure, not this convoluted down the sidewalk and across the sidewalk measure to what the state does. The state measures it straight line between the two closest points of the property. Here is my request that I think you all were jumping ahead to. My request is that you might decide tonight as a commission to put a halt, stay, hold, pause, whatever the correct word is, on issuing any beer permits that might come before the beer board until we have time to reconsider this.
No, sir.
Because, because obviously it's going to take time to deal with this. You, you said it has to come two times, two months before, so it would be next month before it can even be, uh, presented. So you're talking about basically a three-month time period. And so that's my request to the board is that you would put a hold on that, since it's not come yet before the beer board, that you would put a hold on issuing beer permits until we could reconsider this ordinance.
Mr. Webb, Mr. Webb, I see where you're coming from. But the thing that, you know, sort of bothers me also, and I, and I don't, I don't understand it, but from what I gather, the First Methodist Church is okay with it.
I can't speak for another church. I can only speak for our church, which is one block away from this location. I do know personally, there are several members there who are just as upset and concerned over the brewery's plans as we are. That answers your question.
Thank you, sir.
And then the other thing, I guess, may, if you don't mind, I'd like to say on, when all this first come up, you know, about our footage and all of that, you know, there was a big question then about churches and, and none of the churches came forward.
That's correct.
If we'd known about it, we'd be glad to.
I think Brother Webb, they did know about it, uh, you know, but I'm not going, you know, I'm not going to disagree with you.
And, and just for the, the commissioners know that, um, that Cory has a conflict on this because she has a client that's, that's part of this. So I've, I've reached out to another attorney to just clarify, you know, the position of the city so that we don't get ourselves into a situation where, you know, we're sued because we're specifically blocking something or that we, we want to do it the right way.
That's correct.
So, um, that's probably something you'll probably hear something back on between now and the September meeting.
September meeting, correct. And so my question, and he pay, you, you make an answer on this one. Um, and this kind of goes back to the, and I'll just preface this by saying, I don't drink, never have, never will. But I'm elected by the citizens of Mount Pleasant. So, you know, if the citizens of Mount Pleasant want a brewery, then we can find them a brewery. We can, you know, I'm fine with them getting a brewery. I just feel like the, the spirit of the law says it can't be within two hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet of a church or a thousand feet from a school. So my thing is, why is that there? That's there to protect the kids that are at the church, protect the kids that are at the school, because you're going to have kids at both places. And I know we can't call it the spirit of the law or whatever, but I mean, if there's a foot requirement in the law, that's what, that's why it's there. It's the spirit behind the law. Uh, so we passed tonight ordinance for the, uh, Hamilton Building Development Agreement. It's going to put a parking lot across the street from the brewery. So our, my que, I guess my question is, the measurement is up the sidewalk to the crosswalk at the red light, then back down to the parking lot, correct? Like, so are we going to have, are we going to be issuing citations for jaywalking? Of people that just walk out the brewery and walk across?
That question legally, you can't jaywalk in Mount Pleasant.
Okay.
You have to have back-to-back, uh, stop, red lights or intersections.
Yeah.
And we don't have.
We don't have that.
Get that more than one light.
Right. Has to be at each intersection. So legally, in Mount, in Mount Pleasant, you can't jaywalk.
Yeah.
I hope to have some more information for you from another attorney since we, since Cory can't address it. And then you could ask those questions too. My concern is that we're in a public meeting. We're talking about making sure a business doesn't get here. And that's very.
And, and, and I, I try to preface that by saying, I have no issue with it. I'm, I'm glad that they're coming. But I just feel like.
Location.
Location, location, location. And everybody's entitled to their opinion, right? Absolutely. But we do, we're getting an, we're getting an opinion from an attorney just so we make sure we're following the rules. All right, that's all we have that offered to, and wanted to speak. Uh, Ms. Granby?
Yes, first, uh, Ms. Victoria, if you will come and get these. You wasn't here last month. I want to thank you for going above and beyond your job.
Keeping a good secret.
Yeah.
Yeah. And making my day so special. I really do appreciate you, and you've done a wonderful job, and my child still thanks you. And, you know, my child means the world to me, so that's why you done this.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you, Victoria.
My next thing is, is that I love being city commissioner. I've enjoyed my job. Don't always agree with everybody up here, but it's okay. That's what I'm here for. And I mean, we all have our opinions and decisions about things. I even love being vice mayor more, but I would also like to be treated as vice mayor, as a vice mayor a little bit better, if possible.
Okay, I'm not sure what you mean.
I'm not sure where you're going.
Because I'm not notified about things. I found out things when, most of the time when we're voting on them. And I, but not just as vice mayor, even as a commissioner, I would like to be more informed on things that's going on, besides what I do on the code board.
I, I would advise you, I've talked to Kate not daily, but close, and she's always available and always makes herself available.
And if there's any information that you're not getting that you'd like to get, what, usually try and make sure everybody's getting the same information.
Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't get emails anymore.
That's, that's, we send them.
No, ma'am, not to my, not to my tablet, and I have my tablet. I have not gotten emails since June, since, uh, back last year.
That, that, I can show you every email that goes to the commission and all five of you are named. I'm not sure what the technical problem is that's causing that, but every email has all five of them.
I've got one from Friday, and you're on it, Ms. Kate.
You're on all of them.
It did not come to my tablet.
We got to figure out what that, the technical problem is, that you're on the list of getting them all. In fact, it's a, it, she just clicks on one button and the whole commission comes up and it goes to everybody.
Okay, because I do not get them.
Is that the only place you look at it is on your tablet?
For my emails, yes.
Okay, you don't.
I go, I mean, I go into my email.
What about in your phone?
If I go into my email, it's not there. That's what I'm saying. They're not there. I get emails from everybody else. I'm not there.
Everybody else is pulling it up and you're on all of them. So I'm not sure what that problem is.
But I'm not, but I'm not getting them.
Which your, who's your provider? Your, your internet provider?
Um, um, whoever they are, whoever took over Sprint.
Okay. Um.
Oh, I can't remember. There's still, them things are merged and split.
The purple one, the purple company. Maybe they can check out their tablet.
Mike, thank you. Congratulations.
He did, uh, he did upgrade my tablet. And I mean, I get them from MTS, I get them from everybody except from up here.
Did you get my finance report?
No.
So that bothered me because my understanding.
I did not get it.
I, her, her email address is on it. I just pulled it up, just to look at the last one. You might get Michael to look at that, please.
I said the finance report.
Well, I bought it in the city. I bought it up here the night, but he's out sick. Cause I, cause.
He's back now.
Okay.
But he waited without the COVID.
Okay, Kate had told me he was out.
Yeah.
But yes.
See, he already gone?
No, he, we're.
Okay. And I had told him that you had some problems, um, and he was going to get with you on that, so, uh, but I didn't, I did not know it's specific to the emails, but, but I know that anything that's going out to the commission, everybody's listed. Ms. Granby is not getting her city emails. She is saying she's getting them from like MTS, but she's not getting any, any of them from the city.
Okay, I can check your account.
And she, and she's on.
She's T and Kate for not up here.
She's in all the emails, just like all the other commissioners are, so. And do you have your tablet?
No, but I'll bring it back because I need it updating anyway. I thought you went here tonight.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. All righty. Mr. Mike?
Oh, I'm good.
You, you don't want to get the emails.
Hey, hey, I'm afraid I might say something.
Been, been nice. Ms. Willie?
I'm good. I'm good.
Mr. Ed?
I'm glad to see, uh, the growth in housing that's coming. I want. We've needed it for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've had to get a lot of things straightened out before that, but with sewage and everything, but I'm glad that we're finally able to do that, and, uh, that's just going to help.
Are you going to get us, are you going to get us a new school? Because we're going to need it.
A new school? Uh, I have, every time we meet, I message Wayne Lindsay, Chad Howe, uh, and let, keep them informed on how many houses are coming in.
And, and just so you all know, they did print in the Herald the results. I still don't know if they're draft results of the census or not. Um, and, and they're not accurate for Mount Pleasant, and we'll go back and do a special census because we know we're over five thousand people. This most recent, yeah, this most recent census didn't make any effort to find people like we did, so.
Yeah.
We'll make sure we do that.
We, we're pushing thirty kids in a class.
Yeah, forty, fifty.
Yeah, just one quick comment for the video. So the rezone ordinance y'all had in front of you a little while ago about the Breckenridge House, the one that you had in the, in your packet, had some errors in it that didn't match what was said in the meeting. So we made, we changed those and re-signed them so that they reflected what was said out loud.
Month ago or what?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
So it's not, it was, it's one that was denying a rezone anyway, but just for clarity's sake.
Because correction.
We did make a change from what was in the packet to what was not, so.
Oh, okay. As long as y'all keep that straight.
Not easy.
Trying.
And I will be brief to Eric's point. I was at, uh, Murray County today at the courthouse and, uh, it was not city related. It was, uh, more bank related. And I ran into a number of the elected officials up there, Joey Allen, a number of folks, and they were all talking about Mount Pleasant and the good things they're hearing and how it is, it's, I think that, uh, Mr. Fleming made the comment, it's cool to go to Mount Pleasant again. That made it sound pretty good to me. That's, that's where, that's, 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 that's good. And, because it's been a long time, folks. So anyway, I don't have anything else, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? In favor?
I'm.
All right. Thanks, everybody, and appreciate everybody's attention.